I can.
All right.
Still want to talk like Wayne?
Yeah, that was Wayne, not me.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
Hey, welcome, Ken.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone, those that are listening in as well as those in attendance. I'd like to begin by standing for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could begin with a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Brad Hat. Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Ken Snyder.
Here.
Incidentally, Brad is celebrating his 30th anniversary with his wife today. That's why he's not with us, so happy anniversary to Brad. All right, then before you have the agenda, take a motion to approve that.
So move.
Support.
I do have one, I don't know if you all saw it, item five, what day, 5J, I think it was, there was a typo. It's fixed, it has been fixed, I don't know what version you looked at, it was fixed late this afternoon. It was addressing the chamber as providing daycare, and I thought we were going to have Kurt and Chantel going into diaper duty.
Going out of our realm.
So it is, it is children's world, not the chamber, so just so that we have that understanding as we vote on this. We'll get to that when we get to the consent agenda, but just a note there. Okay, so let's take a roll call then, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
All right. I'm assuming that the board of supervisors did verify or certify, is that the word?
Safe assumption.
All right, very good. Then we can go on to our next item.
Here.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You're cutting out, I'm getting about every other word from you.
Okay, I'll try and speak into the mic a little more. I was speaking to Sam, so I was turned away a little bit, maybe that's why.
Just confirm that they were, the vote was certified.
Okay, very good.
I heard all of that, so maybe that's what it was.
Yep. I had asked if the vote had been certified by the board of supervisors this week, and according to our newspaper, our loyal newspaper reporter, it has, so then we can move forward with the next item on our agenda, which we will do at the podium. So Ken, if you'll join me over at the podium, please. All right, Ken, I'm going to ask you to stand, and you are standing, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. Tom, are you getting this? Tom, are you hearing this? Well, regardless. I, Ken Snyder, do solemnly swear.
Yes, Tom.
I, Ken Snyder, do solemnly swear.
I, Ken Snyder, do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold all the laws.
I will uphold all the laws.
Of the Constitution of the United States.
Of the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Iowa.
The state of Iowa.
And the city of Sheldon.
And the city of Sheldon.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all duties of the office of council member.
For the second ward of the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
Second ward of the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard. Now, if you would sign. You are now official. All right.
I can't hear anything, Todd.
Nothing to hear. It was just the scribing of a pen.
Wait, wait, we cut video, maybe that's my problem.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to our item four, our public forum. Is there anyone here looking to speak to anything today, either on the agenda or off the agenda? Anyone listening in by Zoom that wants to speak to anything on the agenda or off? And Tom, are you hearing us now? Either, Tom.
I can hear it.
Okay, very good. All right, but nobody's looking to speak up, so we'll move forward then with the consent agenda, as presented. Motion to approve.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Let's take a roll call, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Very good. We have no old business, so we'll move on to the first item under new business, discussing the Crossroads North Phase Two project. Anything that you'd like to say at this time, Sam? Todd?
Yeah, we have Pat with Slowfield Engineering here, he's just going to give a brief overview of the project.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you.
For the record, just state your name here.
Patrick Bickett, Slowfield Engineering.
Very good.
This project is for the completion of the city infrastructure within the Crossroads North Business Park, extensions of the street sewer, water main and storm sewer, will extend the Highland Street from the current intersection to the east property line of the addition. And then Crossroads Drive North will be extended north to the north line of the addition, eight-inch concrete pavement, the water sewer. The end of the turnaround is planned as a granular turnaround, similar size to what is out at the Floyd Industrial Park for the semi-traffic to turn around. We are also incorporating a water main loop back to Runger's Edition along the north side of the Crossroads Business Park Edition, crossing underneath the Highway 60, there were some casings that were installed under 60 prior to construction, we'll be utilizing one of those casings to push the water main through. That'll be a 10-inch line that ties them all back together, so we'll have a complete water main loop for the shuttle crossroads, north and south additions. We're looking at a bid letting for July 15th at 1:00, that's when the bids will be due, with council consideration on July 21st at 4:30. We've set the completion date for August 31 of 2022. That's giving the contractor a wide-open window to get this completed. I'm sure you guys have all heard rumors or scuttlebutt about material shortages for all kinds of different things. The hope is that this will give the contractors plenty of time to get material ordered, get it scheduled in, and get it completed. The, my engineer's estimate on this is $890,000, that does include a 15% contingency built into it. Normally, when we come to this stage of the project, that contingency is considerably less, so my bid, or my estimate without contingency is 774, which in a perfect world, I'd like to see it come into that, but I would expect that we might see a little bit higher because of that. The previous estimates in November of last year, I think it was 905, so we're in line with what we had for estimates in the budgetary process. Standard, we have liquidated damages for late completion of $150 a day. With that, if there's any questions, it would be you.
So the price that you have now is based on the going rate as of today, or are we banking on it coming back a little between now?
I did my best to figure out what they were today, and hopefully we'll see some, you know, adjustment down as far as material prices, but I don't know.
Yeah, nobody does, but it actually went down from what we had budgeted in a little bit, it sounds like.
Well, you know, the previous estimate was, you know, not based on a completed design, so as we go through the completed design process, the big thing that changed was we had, I had a 20% contingency built in in the previous estimates, so I dropped that down to 15, so.
And what kind of price lock or at least commitment to these materials costs do you see, you know, with it fluctuating much like a commodity? Is there a point where you say, all right, get it done, and we're going to, it's going to, the materials cost will be X, or is it going to be the day that they're ordered or the day they're installing?
That's really up to the contractor, you know, and I don't know, I'm sure different contractors have different arrangements with their suppliers about how long that price lock is, so.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up, I did call several contractors that will hopefully and likely fit this project, and all but one of them thought that the process that we're going through would help offset or mitigate some of those potential increased pipe costs. It's mainly water main pipe, is what I'm hearing, they're having trouble getting. But since we don't have anything really large diameter, everybody seemed very comfortable with it. Pat had mentioned to me on the phone, the contractors concurred that the ability for an underground crew to come in yet this fall, and then they would have a paving job, you know, maybe next spring, was very attractive to the contractor. Now, that's not a guarantee of reduction of bids, but it is pleasant. And then the only thing else I want to make sure I hit home on is, and Pat mentioned it, is the granular turnaround. As you recall, that comes as a recommendation from the development committee, and it's there because we have an option on the ground to the north. But I don't want any shocked faces when they see this half acre, because it's huge, granular turnaround on the end of our new commercial development. Pat has provided us several different times, cost estimates to pave it if we so chose. There is enough money in bond that we're going to do, assuming bids come in reasonable to do it, but that's not been the choice of the development committee or the council at the time, so I just wanted to make sure we're all aware, so we weren't surprised. For now, for now, you could have to, now would be your last opportunity to change it if you wanted to.
The turnaround is on city ground or it's on the ground we have option on?
City.
Okay.
And we've determined that that half acre is not large enough to be a prime development. A half acre is just a number I grabbed out of the sky.
Okay.
It's 70-foot diameter, radius, so it's 140-foot wide, so it's large. Yes, exact same thing.
So the theory was, is if we ever do exercise the option to the north, you could then extend the road through there without turning up paving.
Right. Okay.
Would it make sense to bid it as a alternate?
Not if the council has no interest in doing it. I mean.
In doing it as in doing the project or doing it as an alternate?
As exercising the option to the north. But Sam is saying, Sam is saying you could bid the paving as a bid alternate and then decide later whether or not you want to accept it, but, and I know what he's getting at, you could decide whether to include it in the costs or not. But the point of the matter is, is it doesn't make sense to pave it today if you think you're going to exercise the option. And that's the reason the development committee said, put it in grant, because they feel like there's a chance we will exercise the option. Or you, yeah, or you have this odd-shaped bulb in the middle of your road, two.
Is that the option to the north that we talked about in the budget hearing about exercising next year?
No.
Not that specific.
No, not that one?
Right. I prefer larger one than the easy.
Okay.
When you asked, do as an alter, I was wondering if you meant doing the granular turnaround as an alternate?
No, I asked about paving it.
So if the project comes in over, is that something we would eliminate, or is that something we really want to have there for turnarounds?
I would say past history has told us if we don't put a turnaround on the end of these commercial developments, we end up with a mess. We end up with trucks running over curbs, getting stuck. I think we learned that by the holiday end.
Okay, so that is not an option.
I don't believe, it's an option, I just don't believe it's a very.
Not an option you would recommend.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else for us, Pat?
Nope.
All right, thank you for being here today. Move on to our discussion. So we have the resolution here before, in your packets, which sets the bid date opening as well as the public hearing. To entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll move to approve the resolution that set the bid opening for Thursday, July 15th at 1:00.
Support.
Support.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right, then moving on to item E, we have the resolution to approve engineering services for the downtown mill and overlay asphalt project. Anything you'd like to say there, Todd?
Sure, I have Jason here from Beck, and he can give you just a quick little background on that project.
All right, Jason, do step forward, state your name, for the record there, please.
Yeah, Jason Eggbrad with Beck Engineering.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, welcome. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to working with you on the project. Brief overview, spoke with Todd a couple of months ago, we lined up certified testing services, we have some soil borings and a geotechnical report for the downtown area east of Second Avenue, on 10th Street, 11th Street, Third Ave and Fourth Ave, so we'd be looking at a total of six blocks of asphalt mill and overlay. We have cost estimates included, and a kind of just a general layout map with the proposal, but would be certainly willing to entertain any questions that you might have on the scope of the project.
Does anyone have questions for him? Any question from you, Tom, are you hearing this?
Uh, a moment. I have no question.
All right, good. All right, that was easy. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
All right, so yes, we have that resolution there, and again, entertain a motion for that.
I would move that we adapt this. Support.
Snyder. Support Snyder. All right, any further discussion? And we'll take a roll call on that, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
All right, then the final item under 7C is a resolution regarding a water watch. Sam, any comments from you on that? Todd, do you have? Or Todd?
Yeah, I appreciate the help we've gotten from the newspaper and the radio station on advertising this. We really need the public's assistance on this voluntary water watch. The path we're currently on is going to take us directly to mandatory restrictions, and to be quite honest, we're not that far from it. The system is currently operating at a level to where we could enact mandatory restrictions now, we could have done it last week already, that's how quickly the water uses has escalated. In my, in my time here with the city, we'd never seen a day over 1.3 million, and we had, in the last week, we've had four days over 1.3 million and one over 1.5. That's not sustainable usage for our current wells, especially not drought scenarios, so people can help us out, water a little less, make sure they're watering at appropriate times, you know, protect our valuable resource, and we won't have to go to mandatory. Yesterday, we pumped just about 1.3 million. That path continues, and we'll be having a different conversation potentially in a couple of weeks. What would a mandatory situation look like? No watering flowers and gardens over twice a week, no irrigating lawns, period. Essentially, all non-essential use, washing cars, except for commercial-type lots, that usage is banned, not allowed. And then if we went to the next step, which is the water emergency, that's when enforcement fines, escalated bills, all that stuff comes in, and we really don't want to get there. That's not going to be any fun for any of us. Is most of the increase in the commercial side or the residential side? I don't know that I have a way to answer that right now, Pete, my, from riding around town, I'll tell you, I think most of the increase is coming from water and grass. It seems like to me there's a lot of people that are, have overseeded or reseeded, trying to, you know, recoup loss from winter kill last year, which was, there was a lot of it, along with recovery from the ponds of the drought. But the drought is still here, and matter of fact, it's worse today than it was then, and I don't see any significant rains in the future. Yeah, it's, we are already to the point, I think it'd be fair to say we're one, we're one equipment failure away from, from a mess, because well 15 is our primary pumper, it's our primary deep-well pumper, and it's on a variable frequency drive, and we have actually had that well turned up now higher than what its backup can produce. So if 15 goes down, we will lose a couple hundred thousand gallons a day, and that will make our current levels, I mean, we'd have to cut back to under, under a million at that point to even have a chance to provide essential services. So just asking people to conserve and take it seriously, it's a lot easier to water a little than not water at all.
Okay.
So would it be safe to say in your time here, this is as bad as you've seen it? Yeah, I think so, and the main reason why, Wayne, would be the floods of 18. So in 2012, we were, we were this dry, I think our pumping levels in our wells right now is actually a little lower than what they hit in 2012, but then to make matters worse, the floods of 18, if you'll recall, we had three, three wells get overtaken by the floodwaters, and we were never able to put those back in line, online, DNR regulations, couldn't pass the regulations, so we were forced to cap it. So we actually have less water today than we did, less water available to us. And, you know, those wells, those three wells combined didn't produce enormous amount of water, but an extra 250,000 gallons a day, that would hurt you right now.
All right, we will expect that you'll continue to monitor, and in two weeks, we come back again for a special meeting, we could maybe have a report at that meeting, it would be good to know.
Yeah.
Things are going.
Will do.
So that resolution is there now, we need to approve that as well.
I'll move that we approve the water watch.
And do I have support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
All right. Moving forward to our zoning ordinance amendment, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on that. If there's anyone here that would wish to speak to that, now would be your time to come forward or to unmute yourself if you're listening in by Zoom. And this is a zoning, this is a public hearing on both of the zoning ordinance amendments as listed under B and C, just so everyone understands. I see no movement in here, I see no one gearing up to speak to us electronically. Have we got any public comments in our, written comments in the office at all?
No.
Okay. Then I would say it's safe to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Just a clarification, there was no one there to speak at this public hearing.
No, that is correct, and there were no written comments either.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Snyder.
Hi.
All right, then we move on to the actual resolution. Item B is a resolution to affirm the form and proper process of the ordinance and paves the way for the first reading.
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
And then the second part of that, the zoning ordinance amendment to rezone 3099A and 3099C on Nest Avenue. Yes, please.
I just wanted to make a clarification that I put in the two beacon links in the Town Cloud and on my device, it's probably for everybody, I don't think the link for 3099C, the Voss property is, is coming up. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you click on the first link for 3099A Nest, the Borre property, and you scroll over to your left, the Voss property is two properties to the left, and it's shaped like a hat, and so just in case you're curious as to where the Voss property is, it's a few lots to the left. So I would recommend, if it's okay with you, to move forward like we did when we rezoned the Rota property at 3075A Nest, that we authorized first reading and waived second and third, and wrapped, and wrapped this up.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments based on what Sam has just mentioned to us? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve this amendment and recommend that we move it forward without second and third reading.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Last chance for any discussion. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Okay, moving on then to reports, the report section of our meeting, the first report's going to come to us from Police Chief Scott Birch. Scott, if you would step forward.
Evening. I don't usually give you guys much of an update, so I thought I was due for one. Just want to let you guys know that we will start doing clicker ticket this fall, which the state kind of treats it as a grant.
Scott, if you could move in just a little closer to the mic so Tom can get this as well.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I think this year we'll get about $7,000 for the program.
I'm not hearing from that mic at all, I'm afraid.
Okay. There's nothing else we can do at this point, well, we'll try a handheld once, maybe that might do it.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so like I said, we're going to participate, clicker ticket, which we, about $7,000, that can go towards things like cameras over time for special projects, seatbelt enforcement, OWI enforcement, things like that. They'll get me agreement this fall when we start participating in that, so just so you guys are aware of that. Just to let you know how the hiring process, we're kind of looking through the USDA grant, it looks like, you know, talking with Sam that that probably won't happen with any funding for actual officer. We're applying for a grant this year for cops, which we did last year before I started. I think this year, I think we have a pretty good shot at it, but I'm not going to get my hopes up. Just, I don't want to get disappointed, but I think we have a pretty good chance this year, so we're still pursuing that cops grant, which we should know. So we're still pursuing that cops grant, which we should know by August, hopefully if we got that. One of the big items is department vehicles. As you guys know, we are planning on getting a new truck for the next year. We've ordered one. With the current vehicle situation, I don't know when we'll get that. I don't even want to try to guess, I've asked the dealership. I don't know when we'll get one. That's the short answer to that. Recently, though, some events came up, you know, we gave Officer Meinike one of the current vehicles, one of the newer ones for a K-9 vehicle. Current events have came up that makes us aware that we probably still need another vehicle, even if we have that vehicle, that truck coming from the Drinkos. So we're trying to find some money in the budget to get another vehicle. I found a place that actually has vehicles on their lot, can outfit one. Eight weeks is what they tell me. So that's kind of something I've been exploring with Angie, is, is if we have some money left over to get another vehicle. Another thing I wanted to touch on was, was us working special events. Having only seven officers, you know, it's kind of hard for our department to work special events. So I kind of wanted to put it out to you guys, what your thought is on if we bill for special events. Sam had suggested possibly, you know, looking at local option sales tax to help pay for that, you know, because it takes manpower from not only us, but SCAT, MAA, FIRE. So that's kind of something I wanted to put in your guys' court instead of make that decision whether or not we bill, whether or not we find a different funding source, or if we just hit a brick budget. Something I kind of wanted to put across to you guys. Another thing I want to give you guys an update, the K-9 training. If you're not aware, Officer Meinike has been up there for 12 and a half weeks now. He's got about a week and a half left. He's tired, but from everything I'm hearing, he's doing extremely well. The owner of the kennel has high expectations for Officer Meinike, I guess Officer Ballen. He expects them to be one of the best dogs in the state of Iowa. So that's good news, puts a lot of pressure on them, but it's good news to hear, so. And Sam had wanted me to mention, you know, that he's been busy with doing code enforcement, we've been helping him get letters out, getting a lot of vehicles off of yards, things like that. And then, this kind of changed a little bit yesterday, we kind of want to explore the idea of getting a shooting range. Between the sheriff's office, us, we use a public shooting range. We talked yesterday, there might be a possibility that if we help out with that public shooting range, that we could have certain days that we close it just for law enforcement use. So that's something we're kind of exploring right now. Todd was out there yesterday, it would take a lot of material, so, I don't know, but I just kind of want to put that on your guys' radar that we're looking at options.
What are you doing now for a shooting range, other than that? That's it?
That's it, using the public range. So if someone's out there shooting too, you know, we can't go downrange, so it kind of makes it difficult. Sheriff's Office is doing the same thing. So we'd kind of like to explore an option where we pool resources together, pick something out.
So if you're talking about pooling resources, you want something more than going down there and stapling up another picture of a bad guy and then walking all the way back and letting a few rounds rip? Are there like specific equipment that you would outfit?
The equipment wouldn't be such a big deal as, as much as material for extra berms.
Oh, sure.
That range right now just has a berm on the backside. We would prefer to have berms on each side of a shooter, too. So you can shoot more than just downrange.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
It would take a lot of material if we went out there. I don't know if there would be a better location or not, that's just something I kind of want to put on your guys' radar. We figured what, it would take five to 10 years of material?
Right.
So what I envision at some point, you know, being in northwest Iowa that we could post-training, we have plenty of facilities, we would just need a range for stuff. That's it.
All right, any questions for Chief Birch?
So we, we obviously know that we have a need for vehicles, and I think it's fairly apparent we have a need for, for personnel. Disappointing to hear about the USDA and, and, you know, that being a national organization and with the current administration and how it's no longer cool to support cops, it's becoming harder and harder to get that kind of money. If you had that money, were allotted that money in the budget, how difficult would it be to find a candidate?
I mean, we, we know how long it took last time.
Right.
It just depends on circumstances, if we can find someone from another agency, or we have to start from scratch, just all that. I, I think we can advertise differently, maybe, or, I don't know, you just don't know.
Right, and, you know, and I know last time, when we hired Officer Crowley, the, the idea was to hire someone that was, that had licensure and didn't have to do the, the train, the academy and be able to hit the ground running. And, yeah, I'm curious to see, in this particular climate, what that's going to take to get, because, yeah, it's going to be, it's a profession that is being less and less pursued. So...
Yeah, I think that's part of it, too, is, is if we end up getting the grant or we move forward regardless, you know, we end up hiring a, a non-certified officer and having sent to the academy. A lot of it is timing, you know, we'll have some retirement...
And I think that it's incredibly important that we, as a council, prioritize getting this done, because, yeah, it's, every day that goes by, it's just going to make it more and more difficult to get quality certified police officers to Sheldon.
Any else, anybody else? Chief, thank you for that report today. And again, thank you for all you and your department are doing. I know Rise Fest put a real strain on the department the other night, but my thanks to you, as well as all of the emergency services that were involved in that event. There was a lot of people to try, to direct and take care of and provide safety for, but our emergency services really stepped up, we're really proud of the way that all worked out. And I know you've been under a lot of stress with the whole bank robbery thing a couple of weeks ago. Encourage you in that to just keep on keeping on with that, and, you know, also with the code enforcement, handing out those, giving Sam some relief there, we appreciate all you're doing for us, appreciate it very much, so, thank you. All right, then we have a resolution there that needs to be for the accepting of the DPS grant. Take a motion to approve that, if I might, real quick.
I wanted to state, so everybody knows, I mean, we, we don't have, we have the summary of the contract in front of us, we don't have the final contract. I feel pretty comfortable with recommending that you approve the resolution. If Chief and I and Micah see something that's a concern, we would ask the mayor, chief, not to sign it while it's reviewed, but it's a standard boilerplate agreement, and I think we can move forward with approving the resolution today.
Okay. So with that, is there someone that would like to make that motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
All right, moving on then to our reports. Sam, is there anything else you'd like to report on at this time?
No, sir.
Todd, anything else from you?
Uh, no, we're busy with projects, I guess if anybody has any project questions, I can give you an update. If not...
Everything on time?
Yeah, whole scene was actually ahead of schedule for a while, we did have, I know I just got done saying we haven't had rain forever, but there was a period of rain on the, on Oak Street when they were trying to get the storm sewer in, delayed them a little bit. They're still on or ahead of the schedule, they give us a pre-con. I'm sure you've noticed, they tore out Third Avenue by the post office, they're, they're turning dirt there, we hope to stake Friday and put storm sewer in next week. Pine Street gets tore out tomorrow, those, those three blocks on Pine Street. So I hope to see a dozer on that next week, doing subgrade prep. So they're moving along nicely, they're finishing up paving on Oak, they're doing some tie-ins, they did two floors today, they tied in Lawn Sync and they tied in North 18th Avenue. They still need to do the Rainbow Drive, North 15th intersection, and they still need to pour driveway sidewalks, a big chunk of that. But you should see a lot of that concrete poured in the next seven to 10 days, I'd say.
There's a lot happening.
There is, I mean, and, you know, we, we plan on bidding Crossroads North, as you just said, for, for Ju- July, this project that you approved with Beck, that's something that we look at trying to get done, potentially get this fall. Looking at bidding Rainbow Drive in October, you know, Beck is working on the downtown alleys and, and parking lot project for us. That's a project that would be likely to bid this winter. And then, of course, we got the stoplights, that's, they'll probably be the last one to bid, yeah, there's a lot going on.
If I can make one comment on that? Anything else? I just want to, I don't think I've mentioned this recently, but I wanted to say something regarding the general obligation bonding that we're doing of, from tax increment financing for all these street projects. Normally, when you do general obligation bonding from a property, the property tax levy, you assess curb and gutter to keep your property tax levy from going higher, right? So, but in this case, like Oak and all, and all of these streets that we're doing, we're, we are able to do the curb and gutter because we're able to do it from urban renewal. So in addition to having less upset people, you also have more money available for other essential corporate purpose items that need to access the property tax levy, such as fire trucks. So I, if anybody asks you, well, why are we using tax increment financing money to do all of these old street projects that are in the urban renewal zone, one of the answers is, is what I just said. So...
Okay, thank you, Sam. All right, moving on, Kurt, is there anything you'd like to share? Scott, we've heard from you, I assume you're complete there. Angie, you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Mike is not with us, council to my left, to my right.
Good.
Listening in, Tom, anything from you?
Up tonight, thank you.
All right, I have just a couple of things, and you're meeting, the media, I can use your help with this, too. We have a few openings on different boards where terms are expiring at the end of the fiscal year, which is just June 30. There are openings for Crossroads Pavilion, as well as a library board, no, excuse, yeah, one, one position on the library board, and Trails Committee, there's a couple of openings. So if you have an interest, who would like to serve, contact the city, contact myself, contact your councilman or the councilman in large, but I encourage you to get involved, it's a good way to get a, see the inner workings of what's happening in the city, and it's an opportunity just to meet some other people you otherwise probably don't rub shoulders with, so. There's that, and then also, we talked a little bit about Rise Fest, but I just want to give a shout out to Rob Rosiovom and his team, as well as the Army of Volunteers that came together to make Rise Fest 2021 a reality this year. After making the difficult decision to cancel the event in 2020, you guys more than made up for it this year. The lineup of musicians and speakers, the beautiful weather, and a record turnout made this, in my, in my estimation, the best one yet. Standing with the crowd on Friday and Saturday nights and looking around at the mass of people that were in attendance, made me extremely grateful to be a part of this community. All of those you, that were involved, you are a blessing to many, so thank you. And that's all I have. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.